Like the college board, Penn Trafford School Board Meeting, January 12th at 7:06. We start with pledge of allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the equality of course and one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have water all over.
Mr. Leguero, roll call. Yes, President. Mrs. Ising.
Here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Newell is absent. Mr. Neiman.
Here.
Mr. Trussey.
Here.
Mr. Stogel.
Here.
Dr. Tre.
Here.
You have a form, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Leguero. We're going to change things up a little bit here. We're going to move information up first because of some of the weather going on out there. Uh, Dr. Harris.
All right, thank you. First of all, Mukish Johnson is here with his presentation. Student Union Representative.
After 2015. All right, so we're going to start off with Student Union. Student Union will be having a Senior Citizens Prom, which is paperwork up here for potential sponsors. On February 21st, 2015, from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM in the high school cafeteria. This stands is for area senior citizens 65 in order. A jazz band will be performing. There will be a DJ, DJ TJ, and like your freshmen's. Teens for Jeans collection will be from today until February 14th. The jeans will be delivered to Aeropostale on February 15th, and that the school that collects the most jeans will win a $5,000 grant for the school. Prom Committee. There will be an informal dance sponsored by the Prom Committee on February 27th, 2015, and this year will not be themed after last year's previous morp. Also, grand marks this year will be held in the gym because of construction. And lastly, is there any comments, questions?
What's the jeans program?
Uh, Teens for Jeans. What happens is you can bring in old jeans, and Mr. Labuda has a box in her room where you can drop them off, and we drop them off to unfortunate kids at Aeropostale when they do that.
Do you own old fogey jeans?
What?
Old fogey jeans?
Yeah.
Do you want to donate them?
Yeah, I mean, actually, just bring them in.
I'm getting ready to clean out my closet, honestly.
I'm good. Yeah, we need them. So, this is Labuda's room.
High school, right?
Yes. Any other questions, students? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Next, we're going to move to Student of the Month, our favorite part of each school board meeting, and favorite part of the month. And we're going to start off with the elementary from Sunrise.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Harris. I actually have to give my district goal update because I have not been here yet this year, so I will briefly go through that very quickly. Sunrise has had an extremely productive and busy first half of the school year. Our staff have been working tirelessly to achieve progress and growth with the instructional and achievement goals. Our building's SMART goal focuses on the implementation of PLN writing strategies. Our students are writing class books, daily prompts, journals, and we have increased our expectations with writing on assessments. We are also reading the book, The Daily Five, as a staff to learn new literacy and learning strategies to add to our reading lessons. We have had training and discussion sessions with Greg Saracini regarding DOK. The staff has been working to change the depth of their questioning in order to increase rigor. Greg has been a great help in these morning discussion sessions. Grades three, four, and five are working on their STEAM lessons during science classes with all the students. They complete EIE kits, other STEM-based activities, and lessons involving creativity, problem-solving, and collaboration. Customization such as MCL is embedded into our daily experiences. All of my grade levels in the building pre-test for math. They address individual skill needs with flexible grouping and plan lessons that meet student's skill areas. Several grades have implemented some customization in reading by flexible grouping for skill lessons on a variable schedule. Others also use novel studies to address skills instead of simply using the basal reader. In addition, the Sunrise staff is truly dedicated to not only raising the achievement level of all students, but also seeking out creative and meaningful experiences for students to grow in their individual learning. Working to address the PA core, align the curriculum to the standards, and also meet the district goals has kept the staff driven, focused, and extremely busy this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. President.
Sure. So it is my pleasure to welcome Jessie Bridge. Jessie, you want to come on up here? Sunrise Elementary would like to congratulate the elementary Student of the Month for January, Ms. Jessie Bridge. Jessie is the 10-year-old daughter of Jessie and Debbie Bridge, who are here this evening. She is currently a fifth grader at Sunrise. Jessie has one older sister, Mackenzie, who is a sixth grader at Trafford Middle School, and a younger brother, Brayden, who is four. We are so proud to have Jessie in our school and district. She is a bright spot in everyone's day and a joy to have in class. When I asked Jessie's teachers to describe her, they stated that Jessie really tries hard in everything she does. She is willing to ask questions and always has a smile on her face, just like now, as along with being nice to others. Jessie continually approaches each task with a positive attitude. Jessie's homeroom teacher, Mrs. LeBecky, stated that Jessie is a pleasure to have in class. She works hard, participates, helps her classmates, never gives up, and is always in a good mood. When speaking with Jessie, she told me that she likes to play soccer on her PT travel soccer team and also dance around the house. She enjoys communicating with her friends by texting or using FaceTime. Jessie mentioned that she enjoys helping her sister with her homework and also her brother when he needs any kind of assistance. Jessie's favorite part of her school day is math. She told me that, quote, "When she has a big test, she wants to make sure to study hard so that I can get a good grade on it. I ask the teachers questions when I don't understand something, and I like to have my mom check my work to make sure it is right." In speaking with Jessie's mother and father, they told me that they were extremely proud of Jessie. She has been working very hard lately at school. Jessie continues to try her hardest at whatever she does and makes efforts to always do the right thing. They told me that she is helpful and constantly tries to please others. At home, Jessie loves to sing and dance around the house. She and her older sister, Mackenzie, work well together and help each other with their homework. Jessie also remembers to include her little brother, Brayden, in activities. Jessie spends her free time doing active sports. She plays on the PT soccer team, enjoys shooting hoops or riding her bike. Mom and dad told me that she just never sits down. It is my absolute pleasure to recognize Ms. Jessie Bridge as the Sunrise Elementary January Student of the Month. Congratulations.
She's running off, she's done.
So you asked a lot of questions. Have you ever had Mr. Renier?
I have.
Did he give you good answers?
Thank you.
All right, congratulations. Sounds like you're quite a handful.
Thank you.
We're proud of you.
Next, we're going to have Mr. Denapoli from Trafford Elementary.
Gives me great pleasure to introduce Ms. Gabriella Musser as this month's Elementary Student of the Month from Trafford Elementary. Gabriella is currently a third grade student in Mrs. Sipple's class. She is here tonight with her mother, Sarah Musser, and her fiance, John. Also, her aunt and uncle have come to show some support, which is really nice. She's been talking about it the last two, three weeks. She's been very excited about tonight. Gabriella is a well-rounded young lady who truly enjoys all aspects of school. While she is out of school, she loves to play with her two miniature Pinter dogs, Jack and Zoe, along with taking time to brush her cat, Emo. When she has some free time, Gabriella likes to listen to music on her mother's iPod and play Solitaire as well. Talking with her classroom teacher, Mrs. Sipple, she states Gabby is an exceptional role model on how to be a great student. She is always positive and open-minded. If she has a question, she doesn't hesitate to ask. Responsible, smart, hard-working, neat, happy, flexible, and curious are all great words to describe her. Her compassion and kindness towards others makes your heart melt. She always knows how to scoop up the good in any situation. Other students are drawn to her because of her demeanor. Her smile is infectious. I will take 20 of her any day. That's some good stuff there, Gabriella. When asked what she would like to do in the future, Gabriella mentions the medical field, maybe a veterinarian. Huh. We are happy to have Gabriella at Trafford Elementary, and congratulations on being this month's Student of the Month. Congratulations, Gabriella. What kind of dogs do you have?
Mini Pinters.
Mini Pinters, how big are they? I mean...
They're very short.
Like... All right, there you go. Congratulations.
Next, we have Mr. Simpson at Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. I'd like to introduce Grace Bender, eighth grader at Penn Middle School. Grace is a 14-year-old eighth grader, and she has three sisters. Sarah, senior here at Penn Trevin High School. Emma, seventh grader at Penn Middle. And Amelia, who's a second grader at Harrison Park. She is the daughter of Brian and Angela Bender. I spoke to her younger sister, Emma, and she shared how much of their time is spent together on creative endeavors, drawing, singing, and critiquing each other's art. She's very proud of her big sister, and she says people would be surprised to know that she suffers a little bit from stage fright. You'll see why in a minute. She's a high honor student, and she's actively involved in the Spectrum program. Through involvement in Spectrum, she's participated in many activities such as the architecture competition, prose, poetry, duodrama, vocal competitions, and a number of other activities. Grace's passion is the theater, the stage, and everything involved with music. She's a member of our band and chorus. She plays the French horn, flute, and piano. She was elected to the All-County Band in both 2013 and 2014, and I'm assuming that's going to happen in 2015 also. She was also selected to District Band. She loves to sing and studies under her voice coach, Gail Nollet. This year, she's been, had the honor of being selected to the All-County Chorus also. She's very involved in local community theater, in addition to being a member of the Penn Middle Drama Club, where she was belle in last year's Spring Musical, Beauty and the Beast. Grace has performed in 25, he has 25 productions at several different local theaters. When she's not performing, she's out helping in local theaters with painting, ushering, and whatever else needs to be done. In addition, Grace is an active Girl Scout and has recently been selected to be on the Girl Scout Media Team for Girl Scouts of Western Pennsylvania. She was also chosen to sing the National Anthem at the 100-year Girl Scout Anniversary Opening in downtown Pittsburgh. Her favorite part of Girl Scouts is camping with friends and volunteering for local community events. Grace's teachers say that she's not only an outstanding student on her own, she's someone who's always willing to help others. She's bright, organized, mature, and always seems to be happy. She's simply a delight to have in class. What separates her from other role model students who do well academically is her positive attitude and personality. She always has a smile and brings that energy to the classroom. Mr. Beckel says she's the A in STEAM art. She's currently scheduled to participate in six Spectrum events all in the next few weeks. Just the other day, he observed her singing as she worked on an architecture project. Before long, additional group members were singing "Let It Go," summoning Elsa's inspiration. Inscribed on the Nobel Peace Prize Media for Literature is a Latin translation, "Inventions enhance life, which is beautified through art. Having Grace in class helps beautify all activities." I've yet to find a more conscientious, talented, and hard-working student in the six years I have known her. Grace is always striving to put the extra effort to take herself to the next level in singing and playing, singing in anything else she does. Proud to announce Grace as our Student of the Month.
I will pass on the certificate a little bit later, but we're going to move on to the high school Student of the Month. Mr. Cap.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. It is great pleasure to introduce Sarah Wilkinson from the high school. Sarah is currently an 11th grader and attends the VOTech. She is in the carpentry program. She currently has a 3.6 GPA and to date has not missed one day of school this year. Spoke with some of her teachers to get some ideas how she is in the classroom. Mr. Campero for science. Sarah is an excellent student as well as a wonderful person. In chemistry, she is one of the highest-performing students. She is willing to help others learn and have fun while working in groups. Her friends find it amazing that she hasn't missed school one day since second or third grade, I'm not sure, but they describe her as someone who isn't afraid to be herself. Mrs. Spada, Sarah constantly demonstrates brilliant academic performance. She is intelligent and inquisitive. She earns to gain both in-depth knowledge of all presented material and has shown true motivation. She's extremely cooperative and possesses the capacity to contribute positively to the work as a team. With her determination and hard work, I have no doubt Sarah will be successful in all of her endeavors. Mr. Shaw stated Sarah is conscientious student and puts good effort in precalculus class on a daily basis. She is mature, quiet, and all-around great student. It's great to have students like Sarah in class. And finally, Mr. Kissler from VOTech. Sarah is a very hard-working student, and he has had the privilege to work with her for the past two years. When Sarah arrives to shop each day, she goes straight to her locker, puts on her work boots, safety glasses, and gets her tools out and goes right to work. She has always been pleasant, cheerful, and a pleasure to work with. Her work ethic is fantastic, including the fact that she has not missed a single day of school this year. That's big, especially coming from VOTech. She is always on task and always strives to do excellent work on every job and test in the shop. Sarah is the only female student in carpentry class but fits right in with all the other male students and is well-liked and respected by all of her classmates. For ambitions after high school, she continues in education in the trade. Finally, I'd like to congratulate Sarah Wilkinson as Penn Trafford High School Student
Congratulations, Sarah. I'm always glad to hear somebody from VOTech, I'm a VOTech graduate myself.
Thank you.
You did very well.
We always do a group photo after the presentation. Do you think Grace will be back in time for a group photo? Okay, so at this time, if the other three students can come up front. As we are transitioning back to the media, I think they have a couple other things on their information. One is for School Recognition Month. They also have something, Taff, too, that we just briefly got to talk about. Remember, January is National School Director Recognition Month. I was going to have an article to read, too, but I gave it to Chris and Brenda, so hopefully they can publish it, and I'll just read your accomplishments from last year, probably save us some time. Last year, you approved over a $31 million building project, bonds totaling over $9.5 million. You hired 18 teachers, hired 12 student learning assistants, and improved the memorandum of understanding for the SLAs. Hired five special education teacher assistants. Hired an occupational therapist to save money from outsourcing. Negotiated a four-year teacher contract. Implementation of new instructional programs, including core language classes at the middle school, Pradevade Way, Zulama, and ATD courses at the high school. Approved a technology purchase totaling $570,000 to provide upgraded technology to all the buildings. Approved a five-year food contract. Approved the budget for the 2014-15 school year. Examine, updated, modified, and approved at least 114 school policies. Establish new board non-negotiable goals. Approved the new naming rights policy. Adopted a new teacher evaluation system. Implement a rightful club. Approved the purchase of on-hand schools to provide data analysis to administrators and teachers. Added a new PT cyber academy to help reduce the cost of students rolling cyber school. Hired a high school principal. Hired an assistant superintendent, which I really do appreciate, and hired a superintendent, which I appreciate even more than the superintendent. It was a busy year. You did this all. Thank you so much. Like I said, I could probably double everyone's paycheck easily since you don't get paid anything, so I do appreciate it. Put a lot of time and effort into it, and here's hoping that this school year is not as active. But there's a lot of things on, and the more we do, it's great for the kids, so I really do appreciate it, so thank you so much. In other news, two other items. I know I said I was going to be short, but I lied. Pennsylvania, these are two exciting things. The Pennsylvania Department of Education, Division of Federal Programs would like to honor Trafford Middle School, and I wish he was here tonight, Roger. At the 2015 Title I Improving Schools Performance Conference, a 2015 distinguished Title I school. Trafford Middle School was among the top 5% of all Title I schools due to their high performance and high progress in closing achievement gaps. So I'd like to congratulate Trafford Middle for that. And I also would like to thank the road crew and the police department of manner at Trafford and township for all of the hard work in keeping the children safe and keeping the district well-informed as it are road conditions. For example, last night, they were out treating the roads in preparation for today, and they were out at 4 o'clock this morning as well. I probably received about seven different phone calls, starting from 4:00 yesterday up until 4:00 in the morning about the conditions of the road. I do appreciate that you're always thinking about us and taking care of the school district. And finally, Taff, did you want to tell us about what's going on this week with our new summer STEM programs?
Sure. It's going to kick off tomorrow. We're going to place it online, offering 12 STEAM classes, K through eight, K through nine. Everything's coming from robotics to rocket science. It's going to span half the classes, K through four and five through eight. We're trying to mix it all up, all over the district, and it's going to go all summer. It's going to be offered to all of our students here. The teachers are excited about it. It's a new program we're offering. I think it's very feasible what we're asking. It's four days a week, and we're getting a lot of feedback already from parents wanting where to sign up, so it's going to be an exciting summer. Also, along with that, at the elementary level, at the high school level, we're also offering enrichment, courses, remediation, and also college class this summer as well. And to not get apart like we did last summer with the driver's ed, we're also offering a spring course starting next month. It's almost filled up as well, so we're doing a lot of things other than just the regular school day. It's exciting. We're moving along.
I appreciate this school is always busy throughout the summer, throughout the school year, weekends, there's always activities going on, and I appreciate it. All the admin works, all the teachers. If we don't have the teachers doing it, we wouldn't be able to have the program, so I appreciate that as well. Thank you. And that's all I have for information. Just have to jump back to approval of the minutes.
All right, thank you, Dr. Harris. I have a motion to approve the minutes of this December 2nd meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Leonard, or...
Kachasik.
Mr. Kachasik, second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. At this time, we have, it's recognition of visitors. No one has signed up to speak tonight, so we will move on. May I have a motion to approve the Treasurers' Report and the High School Extracurricular Fund Report?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kachasik, second by Dr. Tre.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. May I have a motion to approve the list of bills for the month of January 2015?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Leonard.
Second.
Second by Dr. Tre.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Old business, do we have any old business tonight? We have none, Mr. President. Ms. Cho, anything from our executive session?
No. Had an executive session before the meeting, and we discussed personnel matters, gathered information, and then discussed some of the issues.
Thanks very much. New business, athletics and extracurricular. Dr. Koschko.
Thank you, Mr. President. Moved to accept the following resonations effective immediately. Andrew Chopp, Girls Assistant Varsity Softball Coach. Steven Perry, Assistant Varsity Football Coach. And Chad Wazo, Junior High Girls Assistant Volleyball Coach.
Second.
It's like Mr. Leonard, question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Moved to employ the following personnel. Unemployment is contingent upon receipt of all necessary documentation and acceptance of Act 34, 151, and 114 waivers in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the 30 days. Summer Daniels, seventh and eighth grade Girls Assistant Volleyball Coach at Trafford. Jason Goode, Winter Percussion Instructor. Meredith Hodge, Department Chair for Math, 6'3" at Penn Middle. Brandy Lockwood, Department Chair for Language Arts, 6'3" at Trafford Middle. Beverly Rubrite, Spring Musical Pianist. Renee Rumbaw, Newspaper Sponsor at Trafford Middle School. Dux Cortez, Spring Musical Pitch Conductor. Erica Smith, Junior High Girls Assistant Volleyball Coach at Penn Middle. Chad Wazo, Junior High Girls Head Volleyball Coach. And Kristy Dolich, Winter Killer Guitar Instructor.
Second.
Second by Tony. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No?
Moved to employ the following volunteer coaches. All coaches and volunteers must have Act 34, 151, and 114 waivers on file with the athletic director. Dave Rennett, Volunteer Girls Volleyball Coach at Penn Middle. Mike Smith, Volunteer Softball Coach. Ashley Ian Roberto, Volunteer Softball Coach.
Second. Second by Dallas. Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? Motion carried. Happy holidays, Mr. President. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Koschko. Budget Finance, Mr. Kachasik.
Thank you, Mr. President. Moved to approve the following expenditures for the high school renovation project according to the schedule as listed below. Second. Second by Dr. Tre. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Moved to authorize the administration to enter into an agreement of the lowest responsible bidder for the pipe burst project at Penn Trevin High School pending all necessary governmental approvals. The bids were opened at a public session on Monday, January 12, 2015, at 12:00 PM at the administration building, and the winning bidder was Wilson Escavating at 407 Eve Nashonok Avenue, New Wilmington, Pennsylvania, 16142, and the bid was $158,237. Second.
Question.
Second by Nick.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? Motion carried.
Moved to authorize Access Architecture PC to prepare and submit all required Plan Con documentation to PDE relating to the site sanitary storm repairs, including a revised F-19 form and Plan Con Part 1. Second. Aye. Second by Mr. Trussey. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? Motion carried.
That's all I have this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kachasik. Buildings, grounds, and safety. Mr. Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do like to make a motion in support of Mr. David Kane as custodian to be assigned by the administration effective December 22, 2014. Compensation will be at the rate of $14.90 per hour with fringe benefits provided according to the negotiated agreement. Unemployment is contingent upon receipt of all necessary documentation and acceptance of Act 34, 151, and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the 30 days.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Ising. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.[1744.13]
Aye.
All opposed? No.
Employee relations, negotiations, transportation, Mrs. Ising. Nothing to report, Mr. President. Thank you, Mrs. Ising. Food Service, Dr. Trey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, if you have a report, it's very rare, once a year is probably it, but the error mark just recently, and then three times this year, primarily in the high school, and I think the media point of view is probably appropriate if you just go through one, because this is a pivotal timeframe. They did a standard report based on personnel, organization, safety, financial issues, and I'm going to split part of this in just a moment with Mr. Logue, and I think you'd like that update. And the other one was client. The client issues relate to the students. They have met three times this year with students to get a feel on sample products that occur. I'm not going to go through the venue because I don't have anywhere near the expertise as Mr. Petrusi, he's going through a lot of venues, so I will not do that. I'm not going to get into his territory anymore. But they do sample a lot of things because there are issues related to balance of quality food, taste, and nutrition and so on. But it's an ongoing process to try to deal with, but the difficulties I'll pass on in some detail to Mr. Logue. You can pick it up, please.
Well, the challenges that the food service really face have to do with the standards that federal government promulgated. As the nutritional standards become tighter and tighter, it makes the meal offerings harder and harder to come up with, and the students are less and less receptive to those offerings. So unfortunately, if the intention of the program is for kids to eat healthier, the big worry is kids are throwing more in the trash, and that's unfortunate. So there is some talk that they may loosen those regulations to some degree, and I would encourage anybody who wants to see less food go into the trash cans to get ahold of the people in Washington and let them know that the kids don't need these standards that are so tight that they don't want to eat. That's...
Good to hear.
So it is, and it's affecting the bottom line of the district. It's very hard. We haven't made a profit in many years, and we're not in this business to make a profit, but we'd like to break even. And the challenges of, you know, enrollment going down and standards just getting so tight, it's technically impossible.
How close are we to breaking even? I understand a little bit of the deficit, is that correct?
We're projected this year with the guarantee that they provided us under the contract. Where they're tracking right now, we should just about break even.
Right. That's remarkable.
It is.
Thank you. That's all we have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Trey. Personnel and curriculum, Mr. Petrusi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Moved to approve the list of substitute teachers and support personnel for the January 2015.
Motion.
Seconded by Phil.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No.
Moved to put the following personnel, who is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary certification documentation, acceptance of Act 34, 151, 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Student Learning Assistant, John Delancy, effective December 15, 2014. Annual salary $28,000 pro-rated at Penn Middle School. Math tutor, Megan Mintford, effective January 13, 2015, for the semester, second semester of 2014-15 school year at Penn Sheriff's High School at the substitute daily rate. Michael Mulchen, effective January 13, 2015, effective semester of 2014-15 school year at Trafford Middle School at substitute daily rate. Math tutor at Penn Middle School, to be determined. Professional, bare-professional Amanda Erickson, effective January 20, 15, at 10:50 per hour at Penn Middle School. And Gabrielle Stoll, effective December 18, 2014, $10.05 per hour at Harrison Park Elementary School.
Second now.
Second by?
Question.
Mr. Leonard?
Question being called for. This would be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
That was my fault, Mr. Leonard. I was making sure I was reading too far ahead, make sure it missed anybody's name. Moved to accept the following resignation, Kristi Killian, bare-professional at Penn Middle School, effective December 23, 2014.
Motion.
Seconded by Mr. Kachasik.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
Moved to approve the following lead requests and subs were noted. Jill Honk, learning sabbatical from January 12 to May 27 of this year. Dawn Brady will be her sub. Tammy King, FMLA, leave effective January 15 of 15 for approximately six weeks. Christine Taft will be her sub. Teresa Morrow, FMLA, from January 5 through January 30 this month, 2015. Steven Ware, FMLA, leave from January 19 to 28, 2015. And Brenda Woolstake, FMLA, leave from November 20 to December 16, 2014. I guess that's... Okay, I'm sorry. That's it then. She already did this, and she's done.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question being called for. This would be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
Moved the Friday Doc 2015-16 school year as recommended by the superintendent and make it part of official minutes. The 2015-16 school year will begin with an in-service day on Monday, August 24, 2015, and will officially terminate June 30, 2016. The last day of instruction in grades K-11 will be Friday, May 27, 2016, unless it becomes necessary to extend the school calendar because of weather conditions, emergencies, or other urgent reasons.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kachasik.
Question.
Question being called for. This would be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
Moved the Friday Doc 2015-16 service employees' calendar and make it part of official minutes. The calendar will be for 247 working days and 14 paid holidays, make it work here for 261 days. Your employees will be paid for 261 days, including the paid holidays.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. This would be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Policy Public Relations Legislative Title II. Dr. Trey, could you please stand in for Mr. Leonard tonight?
Yes, we have a report this time.
Yes, sir.
Would you have a report? I'm not standing very well, I'm standing here. You don't have to be, we're worried about the taste of food. Thank you. Thank you. All right.
Yeah, maybe very difficult.
Thank you, my colleagues. Thank you for letting this pass so easily. Let us move to accept the resignation of Mrs. Tracy Blazer as PTAC Representative.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kachasik.
Question. Question being called for. This would be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
I'd like to move to give the final approval of the following revised policies presented to the board. A copy of this policy is made in the social part of the minutes, 252, which is dating by law.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Leonard.
Question being called for. This would be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
And finally, to move to tend to approve the following revised policies and regulations as presented to the board as listed.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Petrusi.
Question.
Question being called for. This would be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carried.
That's all I have for this, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Trey. Wonderful job. Taxes, insurance, and census, Mr. Stovall.
Thank you, Mr. President. Moved to approve the sale of property located in Penn Trafford School District that is presently in the unsold property repository pursuant to Section 627 of the Real Estate Tax Sales Act, 72 PS 627 by the Westmoreland County Tax Claim Bureau.